Please, everybody stands on the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please stand for the second and the cabinet branch party committee, especially Mr. Schneider. May the Senate, please. Thank you. Roll call, please. I certainly want to thank the Vice President and give you the opportunity to run this meeting. And I appreciate very much. Thank you. Okay, vision, please. We have Susan McNulty, please.
What do you think? I'd like to thank those who did not have any ailments related to football for being here tonight. Anyway, I'd like to thank you for what we needed to do for the council, for that for the community. And I'm here kind of to follow up about the work, not necessarily the work, but the status of what's happening in the Baldwin Street with the Lockland Mill Street corridor. Solicitor McDermott, you had said several months ago that you were looking into what could be done to clean up the area and get the vehicles that had expired tags off the street and help us to clean up the area. I understand that we're looking to change the zoning ordinances, but anybody would have to be crazy to try to put a property into a, put a building or a business into that district. What it looks like, you know, we need to have a decent community. We need to have a community that's sustainable for residents and businesses. And I just, I mean, I'm wondering, what is the status of that?
Yeah, and not me, Frasier, I think that's important on the bottom, but actually what's happened is that they had actually put out an RFP to beyond planning, more kind of globally, as we're talking about. Zoning and planning, but also above beyond that as well. And they have engaged and actually kind of last month voted to have EPD actually proceed on two, two many, I'm calling them many, folks, but small, micro, targeted, real comprehensive planning type projects. One in that area, Baldwin Locklin area, and a separate one in the called storage part, maybe area. Those are just underway. I think Lori, the manager, and the EPD are possibly doing their first round stuff. They just got engaged last month, so there'll be initial data collection and whatnot and moving forward with that.
Well, I appreciate that. When you had said four months ago that you were going to look into why borough codes for garbage, property upkeep, nuisance property, properties probably should be condemned, and vehicles on residential streets that had expired tags, why that was not being enforced in that area specifically around Mr. Gallarducci's establishment? Do we have a progress on that?
That's actually not accurate, what I said, but as a matter of tagging and enforcing ordinances along that whole street, as far as parking, that's a police function. And property maintenance, we do do ongoing stuff with property maintenance, mainly the administration and the administration's to do that as well. Mr. Gallarducci's establishment, his issues with the borough were the subject of a consent order a number of years ago, and that really...
That consent order covered property, the empty vacant lot at 668 Baldwin Street. I don't know if the house, the dilapidated house that hasn't been lived in in 14 years on 668 Baldwin Street, is included in that. I know that there was an issue with that property that's now where, you know, salvaged cars are. And I know he had an issue with getting a fence put up there because it's hard to put a fence in a front yard. Well, if he had, if he had a legal case that said that that's now a salvage yard, I don't understand why the borough didn't just allow him to put the fence up. I mean, it's like we're fighting at odds here about keeping a decent neighborhood, a decent community for my family, for everyone else's family. And so you had said you'd find out that he was grandfathered from following the existing laws for having vehicles...
The why should suppose was regarding the establishment, iron service, southland business, replacing businesses, and that is subject to a consent order.
Yeah, the consent order is for that one property, not the entire area. Okay, so...
If you have other issues that you wish to have reviewed, I could put them through Lori, the manager's office, and we will look at them. And I, the council, on whatever they may be.
Well, we had addressed councils over months ago, and you said you were looking into it. If that's not the case, then we will pursue other avenues. I'd like to know from council, who inspects properties and dwellings to determine if they should be remediated, fixed, or condemned? Who, whose responsibility is that number of?
I can answer to that. When we have a home that structurally is on sale, such as the home, and there's, I have an example at 781 Bower Hill Road. We have our building inspector inspect that building, note that it's structurally on sale and unsafe. It is then condemned. We then work to try to take it down. We have been working with the, it is bank owned, so we have been working with the bank to try to take that down. We just are in the midst of applying for a CBBG grant, year 42, to obtain money from the Allegheny County Economic Development to take that structure down. Right now, we're in the midst of 157 Union Street. We obtained grant monies for that structure that was abandoned and have clearances to take that structure down.
And I appreciate that, but that's not my question. But let's say if I decided to no longer maintain my property, if I allowed my property to fall into disrepair, and I allowed garbage to collect, and I was not following the borough laws, codes, ordinances based on, you know, having a decent, non-nuance property that's fit for human habitation. If I decided to not do that, could one come to my house to tell me I needed to remediate that situation?
What we do is, is if we have a home that is a nuisance home, of which we have many, some are at the magistrate, some have been at the magistrate for two years. Some have been at the magistrate and they're continued, and then they're continued again, and they're continued again, and again, and again. And opportunities are given to the property owners many times over to remediate them. I was just at the magistrate this week with a property that was continued three times. It's finally remediated. We send letters, we send final letters, and we send them to the magistrate. I have a hearing tomorrow with a property that I sent six months ago on Liberty Street. That is, we're finally having a hearing. So we send letters. Most of the time, we get those letters back because what we have is, we have landlords that do not want to take care of the properties, that ignore our letters and finally go to the magistrate. The magistrate usually has to send a constable, and they usually have to bring them in, and then we have a hearing. It's a long process. It's not that we're not looking at these properties. I have some properties that have garbage in their, in their driveways, or garbage around the house, or those type things, where I'll send a letter, they'll contact me, and they'll say, "We're taking care of it." A tree that should come down, dogs barking, those types of things that are easy. And then we have the harder ones, to where, just like 1306 Cook School Road, that house sat there for five years, and then we bought and bought and bought off that house until finally we got something done. So...
And we appreciate that. The whole neighborhood really appreciates it. We're glad with that house we have and someone's living in it.
And they try where they can't even, you know, on fire or road, one, I know you try, there's two avenues largely to go with them is, you know, try sheriff, so it goes in Texas.
Right. There's a mortgage on that house if you can believe it. So, you know, so my fear is that it's, you know, it's in terrible disrepair. So that is our next one, that we're going to get any clearances to take it down. And then what happens is, we have to lean that property for the monies that we get from the Allegheny County Economic Development, which makes it harder for someone else to come in and say, "Okay, I want to take this property over." Because as far as the borough goes, we'll work with anyone as far as taxes and those things go. As far as the things that we have to lean, you know, some of those things can be $10,000. We have some homes that are condemned. We just condemned for the second time, a home on Union Street that has a $42,000 price tag on it.
Yeah, gross taxes, mortgages.
Right, right. And it's actually not in bad shape, but you have, you have people that are coming in there, living in there, starting fires, that type of thing.
Oh, I understand completely. Now, in, of those structures, of those buildings that are currently under borough requests to repair, clean up, are any of those in the Mill Street, Baldwin Street, the Locklin Run corridor, I mean, this, this area of my neighborhood? I know it's only two blocks down from my, my neighborhood, but it's still, as far as I'm concerned, part of my neighborhood.
I think the closest one to you that I have right now is 781 Bower Hill Road. We've got 1235 Union Street, we've got 157 Union, we've had one 67th Street Union. That was just bought and some is redoing that one. We have the, the home at the corner of Baldwin Street, this condemned. And then the owner brought it up to just, just...
Kevin Meyer.
Yeah, he brought it up just to where we couldn't do anything with it. Now it's in disrepair again. I'm just looking at it today, there's graffiti on the door, that type of thing.
I spoke with him a lot of time ago about that property. He said that there have been fires, there have been people inside, there's no copper, it would require a lot of work. He had originally wanted to change that building from a two apartment rental to a business, but the zoning, the zoning laws would make it so that he couldn't do that because he didn't have enough parking. So that building's sitting there empty, and Mr. Byer really would be foolish to put any money into that property. But that lot on the side is being used for vehicles that have expired tags. So I guess we're playing the, the pass, the, we're passing the ball here, passing the buck about what's happening with the properties at the end of Mill Street and at 668 Baldwin, and the hobby shop that's sitting empty, that's been empty for a very long time, and the vacant buildings.
Appreciate you. Let me interject something, vacant buildings, you know, there's, there's two levels of condemnation. But, I mean, folks, as much as you'd like to take a building that's abandoned like that structure, for example, there's, there's, on the thing she's talking about, even with owner occupied stuff where it's either weeds or grass or garbage, you can chase people around and stuff, and enforce that against an owner occupied structure, excuse me. But when you get into abandoned places where it's either commercial abandoned or owner abandoned, it's jacked up with taxes and weeds and the whole nine yards, the problem there is that there's, you constitutionally, even if it's not, there's two levels. I call them demo worthy, you know, and uninhabitable, or there's two levels, everybody calls it condemnation, but there's really two different things. If a, if a building is not worthy of looking, for example, the example you just gave, suppose that building structurally, the engineer cannot certify that it's a danger to fall down, da-da-da, you can't get it done. You can get an order buttoned up so that they have to, you can't occupy, you have to board up the windows, which isn't one of the pleasant things either. But you don't actually, we don't have the constitutional power to order the demolition of a building that's not structural in style. You can make them not occupy, and you can button it up, but you don't have the constitutional right to tear it down. You have to prove that it's actually demolition worthy.
And as the hobby shop...
That's the law.
The hobby shop, as an example, we, the building inspector and I had addressed issues with the hobby shop. So what they did was, the issues that he had addressed and I had addressed, they addressed them. So now, even though someone may not like what it looks like, we don't have the right, they're technically complying. So they may not like the way it looks, but they're technically complying.
Now, some of those, I'm sorry, I mean...
Some of it, they're, they're tough ones, and, and, you know, we do a lot of them.
You go back and forth between trying to use the property manager's code and those ordinances, those enforcement mechanisms, or sheriff sales. Yeah, and there's a lot of it between the both of them. Because they're not, like, Dave Barrow, she tried to get that to sell, one, sell because it wasn't sale worth, but at the same time, you know, we have to achieve the demolition order. Standing for that hand. That's, that building's a substantial building. That, some of these buildings, you may, you may be able to get a contract to take those down for six, eight grand or seven, okay? Some of these more substantial buildings, the borough, as much as you, it'd be nice to go to take them down, but without the pre-emptory, you don't have within your budget to take, scrapping $20,000 to take these building stuff. So that's kind of the challenge.
Well, that, we're all agreed with that, yeah, that, that's true. And we should, we shouldn't let things get to the point where a building needs to be condemned. I mean, we all are trying to keep our properties, you know, in decent shape so that, you know, they continue to have property value. But there are properties in the neighborhood, I mean, if it's selective enforcement, and if someone's not going to be grandfathered, then we need to have some, we need to have the borough inspector, the Mr. Sykes, if it is, to go and look at 66 Baldwin.
Fred Sapp.
668 Baldwin. I am... Fred Sapp?
Fred Sapp is our building inspector.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure. I've never had anyone visit my home to check my home because it's in good repair. Okay, so Mr. Sapp or whoever, you know, and I have to tell you, I'm, I'm really disgusted at the current situation. But two weeks ago, on a Friday, I was driving from my house down Mill Street. No one else in the car but me. I was headed towards Aldi, grabbed a few things from the store. And had I had somebody else in the car, there would have been a picture, but I saw a very large rodent scoot from where Gallarducci's used to live, Mr. Gallarducci's old house that he used to live in on, on Mill Street, across the where Tutu is. And it wasn't a mouse, it wasn't a chipmunk, it wasn't some type of, I mean, I know, I know what animals look like. And it was definitely a very large rodent. And it really, really freaked me out because it was the daylight. And, you know, there's no reason for large rodents like, for any rodent to be out during daytime. That signifies a problem. And I, so I did talk to the mayor about this, and I said, "I don't know." And I went down and I talked to a nice couple that's rehabbing 668 Baldwin. And they said, I mean, they've gutted that place, they've gutted down the studs. They're putting a lot of money into that, a lot of work, and they said, they told me that there is a rat problem on Baldwin Street. And then following up with the mayor, he told me that with the last rain, which wasn't even a substantial rain, and the creek beds did not overflow, there was no rushing water anywhere, that there was sewage coming up inside some of the buildings and homes on Baldwin Street. So even without a major rain event, we've got sewage problems, and there's, and there's, and there's an issue with rodents in that area. So we've got buildings that are full of garbage, we've got things that need cleaned up, we've got vehicles that haven't moved in eight, 10 years. And, you know, I don't know if the county's going to come in and help with any of that. I know, I remember for a fact being at a meeting where Lori explained that, you know, that sewers were cleaned and flushed, and then, and then at another point, they were, they were full of debris again. And that that was going to be an ongoing thing, that we were ready to make sure that the sewers were cleaned on Baldwin Street.
Can I just, can I make a note of that?
Sure.
And we, we can clean the sewers on Baldwin Street, and it is on our maintenance schedule yearly. The homes that got water on Baldwin Street in their basements, and I think the, the fire chief can attest to this, are the homes that do not have backflow preventers in their basements. The homes that were right next door to each other that have backflow preventers in their basements did not get any water in their homes.
Bone dry.
Correct?
Bone dry. Not anything in it, and houses on each side had sewage in it.
So it's normal for sewage to want to backflow into properties even when there isn't...
When you're in a flood plain, yes, because you're in a flood plain, and if you don't have that backflow preventer in there, and at one point in time, years, years, years ago, they were down there. But it's called maintenance, and people that live there don't maintain them.
So the people who don't have backflow preventers, they're...
They're asking for problems because, you know, when the water comes out, it's going to fill the sewer up because...
And it's, it's their, it's their issue to make sewage doesn't come into their building.
And then, my house books also have, probably terracotta lattes that are like sits as well.
And then they got pumps.
Actually, not of that neighborhood, that's kind of the century, you know, pump issue in all borough and county as part of the whole larger sanitation.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. McDermott, but that's two blocks away from my home. All of the, all of the sewers in this community are part of a project.
We have the same problem on Fire Road. There's the same problem on Fire Road. Just go put a backflow preventer in, just stop that from going into your house. You know, there is stuff for people to do to protect their property.
Am I going to need a backflow preventer now that there's additional sewers coming from Upper St. Clair?
No. No, you're missing a point. You did not have that. It's, all the water that's coming down, it's in the creek.
And let me take, and let me, and I think I find this extremely disturbing. There's a rental property on Baldwin Street that has a shut-off valve, but they say they really don't feel like going down and turning it off when it's raining. So they want us to put a backflow preventer in. So they are not taking responsibility. If I lived on Baldwin Street and I was getting water in my basement, and I needed to put a backflow preventer in, I would do that so that I didn't get water in my basement.
But in 13 years of my husband and I have lived in our home, there have been, the sewage backups in the homes has crept up Bower Hill to where it's, the last time there was water coming up and sewage coming up, it was on Bower Hill Road at our neighbors who were across the alley from us. You know, with all this increased sewage and all these increased problems, at what point are we going to be alerted that we have to have some kind of backflow or we're going to have sewage in our basement? I mean, is that a...
You could be proactive to put one in.
So if there's sewage that comes up, the borough is not responsible for the sewage flow that's continuing?
I don't know on that, but, I mean, as a homeowner, if I wanted one, I'd put one in.
I don't understand why anybody wants to continue to live in this community. And I love my neighbors, I love my home, I, I, I think the school district is great. Just the fact that we have an issue with sewage, now we have an issue with rodents, there's garbage that's never cleaned up, and the fact that the borough has to, has to try to shame people into doing this. Now, Mr. Pelosi owns a property on Baldwin Street, I walk past it all the time. It's very clean and very decent looking from the outside. There's a lot of cinder blocks, a lot of vehicles, but there's no garbage, there's no debris. You know, you just, there's nothing littering his front door, he sits on Casper, Mr. Gallarducci's place, you know, we're going to...
Wait, whoa, 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 where's garbage at our place? Very clean. The house on Baldwin Street is sealed up, it's clean. I don't know where you're, I don't understand what you're...
There is debris and garbage, and we...
Where?
Vehicles on Mill Street that have not moved in years.
You're full of it.
I am not full, but they're there.
That's, that's your, your, your...
You know what, then I will call the county, and I will ask the county to enforce the laws and ordinances that are on the verticals.
Have you gone up the alley and saw all the vehicles that are sitting up at the alley? How about over at Andy's over there? Do you say anything about that? No, you don't say anything about that. You're talking about the Gallarduccis, like they're demons themselves.
I've never seen garbage on that way.
Oh, well, you know what, you're talking about abandoned vehicles. What about the ones over there up the alley? That guy up the alley that has all these vehicles? No, I'm not going to complain about it.
Please. Thank you.
You're the one that's doing a complete...
Yeah, I don't want garbage to surround my neighborhood.
Okay, well, then, don't move down that way. Stay up at that end.
Apparently you're...
Next, Melissa Reddell.
Yeah, I'm moving up to your place.
428 ADF.
Hi, this is Melissa Russo. This is my very first council meeting. Welcome. Thank you. I live on Chief Avenue, and I have my question. I was wondering if it was possible, this was in the future, I want to have a graduation party for my sons. And I was going, I was thinking about asking the borough if I would be permitted if I were closing the street down for like five to seven hours on a Saturday. Kind of like a block party, but I want to have a graduation party for my son on the street that we live on. I did talk to a few of my neighbors, I talked to a business owner that lives on the street, and so far, everyone's willing to agree to it.
Well, I think, I think there are two people you should talk to, the mayor and the chief. And then, those are the two people that are really good to make it happen, or not make it happen, more likely they're going to make it happen.
This is like in the future, but I didn't know like if I would, if I could do that, like what the process is, or what I would...
Why, for, for many, that's police office, and if it comes before me, and it's going to prove that it's reasonable. I can tell you that what I look for is that it is a block party, your neighbors are there, are part of it.
Right.
Not simply you're using the street for a graduation party.
Right.
That's the difference.
Gotcha.
Okay?
That's the difference.
So, block parties, I'm, I'm, block parties are a great thing in this community. It is amazing. And, you know, I was up at one this weekend. It is really what makes this community great, so I would encourage you to actually have a block party.
That's right.
Okay?
Block party, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Those two, they're the one that could make this happen. Okay, yes, sir, it's got a... Okay, a motion to the Board of Counsel regards the minutes of September 14, 2015 workshop meeting as submitted. I need a motion. Jason and Bill. Everybody in favor?
I'm saying I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Everybody in favor? Nine. Don't we have any more to call on? This is it. Okay, a motion to the Board of Counsel regards the minutes of September 14, 2015, record meeting as submitted. I need a motion. Jason and Bill. Okay, Lori. Your accent gets way better than mine. How about to read the rest?
I will read, I will love your reading.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is Kelly Radsick subdivision consolidation application for Pesman Drive. This subdivision consolidation application dated August 6, 2015 was prepared by Richard Casper and submitted on behalf of Sheila Kelly and Richard and Susan Radsick for the properties located at 1348 and 1352 Pesman Drive. The properties are located in the R1 single-family residential district, 0.0324 acres, 1,411.70 per feet. This should be conveyed from left 23R to left 20C R, and I've attached the left set of... The purpose of the subdivision consolidation is due to the close proximity of the home, 1352 Pesman Drive, and the inclusion of man's saving. None will want to be created by the subdivision consolidation. The plans will review for compromises for awardances by Engineer Sykes. It has been recommended for the consideration of council by...
I need a motion. So, Bruce and Jason. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Cause? Motion, carry. Next, solid list.
Okay, the next item that I have is a solid list of recyclable collection. Sylvia will receive to publicly open the party after the 2nd, 2015, at 10 a.m. for following the results for the options of garbage recycling with unlimited weekly collections. And another option of garbage recycling with unlimited weekly collections, including household waste and e-waste programs which are currently in place. So we've been two different bids, and as I said, the HHW e-waste program is in place now. As far as the unlimited garbage recycling, the cost per year, 2016 waste management, 174.4, ally, 189, value waste, 205.92. 2017, 176.60 waste management, 195 ally waste, 210 value waste. 2018, 182 waste management, 201 ally waste, 214 value waste. Option year 2019, 185.52 waste management, 207 ally waste, 218.40 value waste. And option year 2020, 192.96 for waste management, 213 for ally waste, and 222.72 for value waste. How with the unlimited weekly garbage recycling and the household waste and the e-waste programs? 2016, waste management, 187.20, ally waste, 201, value waste, no bid. 2017, waste management, 189.12, ally waste, 207, value waste, no bid. 2018, waste management, 192.96, ally waste, 213, value waste, no bid. Option year 2019, 192.96, ally waste, 213, value waste, no bid. Option year two thousand nineteen, one ninety-seven, two allied waste, two hundred and nineteen value waste, no bid. An option year twenty twenty, waste management, two oh six, six and four allied waste, two twenty-five value waste, no bid. So what this motion would be, if houses so chooses, is to award the bid for the solid waste and recycling contract with or without the inclusion of the household waste and e-waste program to the lowest responsible bidder. And you can take the three contract years, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, but you can also option for years two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So those have been left to your discretion, and all, all of these items will be provided to, still to, to, down for this review.
Blah, 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 blah. Okay, what we're gonna do here, Mr. Mayor, we are gonna ask for remark, we, we'll ask for motion, we'll ask for remarks at the time, if it's proper. At that time, on the remarks, we'll be called the remarks, and, uh, it could be table, it could be whatever. Or don't make no motion at all, and ask for the remarks before, I will let that to the solicitor to recommend me that.
That's your...
Because they are, they are people who wanna talk about it, and that's how I know. Whatever it's easier, and whatever it's legal, either way it's legal.
You can do whatever. You can put up for discussion versus...
Well, let's open for discussion now, and then we'll do the vote.
My question to our manager was, the difference between the unlimited weekly garbage and recycling, including the household waste and e-waste programs. If you went with the other one, that would leave you with, uh, uh, an empty spot. You, you have to collect recyclers, right?
Right, what we would have to do would be, we would have to have at least a, uh, at least a few times a year, a few times a year, we have to have an e-waste type program here. We have, we have to have, uh, some type of household waste program, um, for our residents. So, um, right now, we have been providing that. We're provided with report every year regarding that, and it's very interesting because I was interested to see if they were using it, if it was actually worth it to have it. I actually get a card from, uh, when they're scheduled, um, waste management gives them a card, and, and they write, you know, was it satisfactory, how do you feel about this program, that type of thing. And I've gotten many satisfactory, um, everyone loves it because, you know, they've had paint in their house for twenty years, they have televisions, they've had those type of things. But I can say this year, they've taken probably at least two thousand televisions alone, um, computers, um, gallons and gallons of paint, so they are using it. Um, my theory would be that, um, once you provide a service, um, if you take it away, it, it makes a little...
Can I interrupt you for a second? I wasn't focused on the e-waste. I was focused on the recycling.
Oh, recycling?
In other words, this, these two differentiations also gets rid of the recycling?
No, no.
No, no. The top is garbage and recycling, the bottom...
Okay, so this body is only the household e-waste.
Right, it would, we, we're required to recycle since we're a municipality of three thousand individuals. So it's unlimited garbage and recycling weekly. The only difference is the household waste and e-waste is included in the second bid.
Right, so here's what it comes down to then. So, I don't, I still don't understand what household waste, household e-waste is.
Hazard is household waste.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now it's the television thing.
Right, okay, and...
There are other things.
Yeah, so what that means is that the residents, we're essentially gonna pay, um, hundred and eighty...
Thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars a year. Each household is gonna pay thirteen dollars a year for an unlimited amount of TVs and paints and whatever else they wanna get rid of. Okay?
Right.
Yes, well, the other deal is to do whatever St. Clair does, which is every month or so, you go down to their municipal building. They got trucks down there, and people deliver their TVs and their paint and whatever they want to deliver. I, I don't know what their charge is, but, is it five, well, they're not delivering down to Upper St. Clair.
It is.
When we were down there, they didn't charge anything. They even took us to... Okay. I can tell you when we went down two weeks ago, they didn't charge anything. But the point is that I'm sure Upper St. Clair is paying something.
For my residence.
Yeah, Upper St. Clair is...
We would have to pay some, as far as if we did that, then we, we would have to, the borough of Bridgeville would have to pay to take those items to the recyclers, um, of which would then be passed on to our residents anyway.
Right, 'cause that's the first big question for council is, do you want to pay that extra thirteen dollars a year?
Yeah.
It's, it's a good service for thirty dollars a year, so, okay, I think the, the, uh, the people of Bridgeville are very happy to have their service. We take away the service for, I don't see where you're gonna get that free, uh, from Upper St. Clair. You think, you're gonna pay anyway. Is it five dollar, five dollar?
If you're not a resident, yeah, if you were not a resident.
Oh, oh, five dollar. You have to take one. Is it, is it worth the seven dollar? I mean...
So worth thirteen dollars?
I think so.
I'd use the service, but it would be.
Well, you can, but...
For those big TVs.
Hey, that's right. It's worth thirteen dollar a year.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause what's the tip, sir? About a year ago, it became illegal to put e-waste in a landfill, and therefore, uh, took a curve. And for a while, everybody thought we were all gonna be scrambling around after the best place with everything, where you can take your TV, but not your paint key. Now, the waste haulers have reintroduced that service as a convenience back to you. They're not taking this stuff to a landfill. They're taking this stuff to another place now. So if you have everything from paint to TVs and computers dropped off at the borough building, then the borough building is gonna be the ones who have to go take that to wherever these guys take it at a cost to you that will become part of your general tax obligations.
Yeah.
So it's either, it's either here in the bid, or it will be reflected, uh, it will be reflected in, in your, in the, uh, in the quarterly grade because we will still have to pay.
Pay now, pay later, pay more.
I had a, I had a one, proper, every one of us, I had a, one of those real monster big TV guns there, and obviously, time went bad. And I called the people, oh, sorry, I called the people and, uh, I say, I'll take them on a curb, and... No, no, don't, don't do that. Just open the door for us. They come in, they take it. I just look at it. Thirty dollar a year, and paint, and everything. I personally, as a resident of Bridgeville, I personally think that's, that's a good deal.
I've used the service and I think it's great.
I can honestly say, we, we live in Cecil Township, and I've got, I've had a TV sitting in my bedroom for probably six months because we don't have that, any type of service like that. So when you don't, you, you realize how much you can use it when you have those types of things, so.
See, to take something good away from the resident for thirteen dollar, it's like a crime, like, I'm like, what, head back?
There's another advantage to this. Because there's no, no extra cost to the residents and no ex, no real hassle, they probably, I know, recall to say, here's the paints that are trying to sneak it in. And so I think there's a great benefit from this, but I wanted to bring it on the table.
Right now, um, just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right now, for two thousand and sixteen, the price that they gave us is five thousand dollars less than the price that we're paying right now for the service. And I know it goes up every year, but just doesn't know, um...
But the bids came in lower than what we're paying right now.
They came in lower than what we're paying right now, yes.
That's because they heard that council was gonna, and the manager, the mayor, would like to...
Collect the garbage ourselves. Hey, we're, yes, we save money, we gotta be competitive.
It's less than the last year.
Yes, so speaking of which, do you wanna talk about that at all?
Well, the other thing, I still like to get our own trucks, but, uh, I think if we get a one-year contract and fill this out, 'cause we could save, you got all the payers, what we could save right now in a little bigger.
Let me take thirty seconds, maybe forty-five real quick, and we'll run through this.
Um, I, yeah.
Because we're both...
Pat and I are both on garbage stamp age, which is really unusual for us, obviously. Um, Pat and I have, have gotten together as far as, he's done his calculations and I've done my calculations, and, and, um, in the beginning, he didn't have some of the numbers, and I provided those numbers to him. And right now, if we take over the garbage within the borough of Bridgeville at this time, with an estimate, and, and this, this is an estimate of the tipping fees, because of course, the tipping fees, you never know what they're going to be, and, and they can go up, and also the amount of garbage that you have within the municipality. We averaged it, uh, over a three-year period, it's two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight point eight four tons, which is a lot. And right now, the, uh...
It comes out to about two hundred and fifty pounds per household per month.
Which is a lot of, a lot of garbage, a lot of garbage. So we calculated, um, you know, purchasing the truck, um, Pat did the tender life of the truck, the capital plus, the repairs, full-time employees, um, pension, payroll taxes. I mean, we calculated everything that we could calculate to see if we would be saving you money or not. Um, Pat and I are pretty close. As far as he calculated two and a half employees, I calculated three employees. So take into consideration, where do you put the garbage and... Well, we're going to have to, we're going to have to pay tipping fees, and, and that's estimated at the lowest tipping fee that we have, so. Um, my calculation was that we would be losing, and in the red, forty-eight dot, forty thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars. Pat's calculation is that we would be saving thirty-one thousand three hundred twenty-four.
And the swing there is two and a half people versus three, and, Bill, that, you and Bruce were having that same discussion. Can you do with two and a half people, or do you need three? And joking around a little bit, if all seven members of council and the manager and the mayor all pick up a little bit, we could probably do it with two people, or two and a half.
And that's a good way to do that, and that's...
I think that's beyond, but...
And that's no recycling up here, that's...
That's, that's no e-waste. No e-waste.
Of course, no waste.
Would you have to create up new, new rules and, yeah, laws over time too, so that would be cost for all of us meeting and...
There's no, there's no management in there.
There's no management in there, and honestly... Thirty-one thousand dollars. Yeah, we have three waste management trucks that are in here on a Monday, and one of them, we believe, dumps at least twice. So, um, it would be all week of picking up garbage plus recycling, and we believe that we probably would need more than three people, probably four, to make it work because you're not always going to have everybody here, and right now, we have a staff of gentlemen. The youngest gentleman we have on the staff right now is, well, we have a mechanic, and then the youngest is my age, which is fifty-seven, so. Um, picking up couches and furnitures and those type of things would be pretty tough. So what, what I'm recommending, and I know Bill's not happy with me, but I feel that it would be much more cost-effective if we went with the, with the waste management, and at least a three-year contract. I mean, you don't have to take the two options, and at least a three-year contract.
Well, you see, South Fayette, they used, uh, their own, not anymore, hey? They discontinued because it was better for them to give it to a contractor. And, and what else, I'm, I'm your delegate for the car, the twenty-one municipalities that we together, okay? We also, the car, think that someday, we're gonna be all twenty-one municipalities together into this. We started working on now. One car already is due, no, this is not due, also they're working on. And, and we also, it's too early, I think. It's a good idea, Bill has a very good idea. But we got three years really to put this in place.
Well, just as...
Penny by penny, and if it's good for you, for us, then we'll do it. I, I don't know.
I mean, we've really calculated to see, because we don't want to cost you more money. But then again, we don't wanna do something that is going to end up costing more money and more manpower, and, uh, and, you know, right now, we have someone off, so we have four people in public works right now, that's it. So if you had someone call, call off, it's just not cost-effective for us at this time, maybe later, we can take a look at it again. But with these bids are, as far as the bids go, they're pretty good bids, um, and they give us, they give us pretty good service. They miss sometimes, but they give us pretty good service, and we've got a good program, so.
And we can't, we can't do a one-year contract, we have to do minimum of three.
We have, we have...
I thought you told me you'd do one.
No.
Well, we advertised that way, and, uh...
We gave the option year, after I took a look at it, I, after I did the six, seventeen, and eighteen, there's two more. We don't have to take the option year nineteen or ten, so obviously, correct.
So you have to take those option years now?
Yeah.
You have those option years in three years to take.
We, what we, what we did last, last time is, we took three years, we did not take the option years of four and five. Now, when we get to the, when we get to four and five, if you decide you wanna take those option years, then, am I incorrect in saying that we can do so?
Yeah, that's where we're just, we're just in the contract, generally speaking, that's...
Right, but we did not take, take the option years last time, so that's why the bid came up again, we only did the three year. And, which, which was actually advantageous to us because they came back lower than they were, um, compared to that. But, um, we have to take, we would have to take the three years and then the two option years, um, we couldn't take a look at that later down the road.
Is there a fuel escalator in here, in the contract and the bid?
Yes.
Well, these days, the US...
Well, the, that was my next question.
And we've never, and they, and even when the fuel was, even when the fuel was at higher rates, they, they never charged us. Our, our rates always stayed the same.
Just wondering about that.
I'm starting to...
I think just when those, just when they were successful in getting those empty streams, the, the prices of the oil kind of fell off, or paid off, so. Right when they bought the clause, they needed more, and they favored us, but it'll come back, yeah.
Let's be very careful that our base is not skewed, you know what I'm saying? They may have put a, a current price of per gallon in the base.
Yeah, you people don't, don't know what I'm thinking, I'm looking sexy in here. I just turned every one a couple days ago. Chris, I don't, what happened, we're gonna be sexy from now.
Do any of us, do any of us, but, I mean, the, we also, um, we also looked a bit into the varying methods. Uh, because North Fayette does this. North Fayette picks up their own bargains, they have their own trucks, and they also use a side-loading truck with a one-main operation and a front-loading truck with a one-main operation.
But they also don't...
Have the narrowness of the streets and the density of the population.
And, and another thing that they don't do is, right now, you can put out a, you can put out a couch, you can put out a bed, you can put out whatever. You can't do that there. You have to go to the borough building, you have to pay a twenty-dollar fee or whatever. You have to put a sticker on it, and then they send an additional truck, so, um, you know, it, it sounds like it might work, and then, and they don't have any type of, um, you know, they don't have any waste in the household.
And in addition to that, and, and I also serve for Fayette Township and that in fact, Lori and I are going to use your soul for the next phase with that, but I appreciate two things. They're the exception to the rule, they're the ones that have been wanting for a long time. Infrastructure, any of the thing you talked about, that's kind of recent evolution of the world, but they have the, they already have the personnel apparatus, the man, and the equipment, and they build their D P W facilities around it because they've always done it. That's easier to continue than it is to start or, or so. But having said that, we are going to, along the way, and...
I, I would suggest that, this makes sense. It makes sense to look at it now. If you feel that you need to look, to talk to North Fayette and do more research, I would suggest that you table. You have a warning this contract until the November meeting, so that you can do your research. It doesn't make sense to do research after the backup you've awarded a three-year contract.
No, I think what we're talking about is future, future planning, having a sketch, and we agree with it. Oh, yeah, yeah, there's agreement, consensus about conclusions you've reached with regard to this contract cycle, however, it's one close topic forever.
And we'll continue to learn and see what, as we, we'll see what we can do as we evolve, but we're not saying that, we're not saying that we're recommending at all.
I think, uh, I think for another month, to, to clean all this question, it's still not enough. At this time... At this time, I will ask for a motion to keep this contract to the lowest paid three years.
Please, that would be waste management.
Waste management for three years.
Including also waste.
Including also waste, new waste, yeah. It's formal motion, are you in motion? However, second, I need second, also second. Roll call, please. We're not that many.
Jason's adding, so what if you rescale YouTube?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next.
The next side of that I have is opposed ordinance number ninety-eight-four.
Okay, we already decided to table, scratch it off for now. It's okay without...
I guess for protocol, that was the discussion.
Okay, well, let's... Let's think of it, thank you. That's the proper way that it's...
Is that this would be a motion to table and until November, possibly, the meeting?
I don't know if we have to put it there.
Send it back.
Motion to table for additional...
Initial review. It's elementary, that's what we do, we send it back.
Yeah, but I don't think we want to put it there. Okay, remember.
It's all a motion to table for additional...
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make that motion, I'll say.
Everybody in favor now? All right, Patty, motion carry.
Next side, ADA door opener project and emergency payment. This will be a motion of authorization to Borough's Council of Governments to renew payment to Automated Engine Systems Company in a amount of eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy dollars for the ADA door opener project. And as per warrants, I think this project has been provided, programs are delegated to the Department of Energy.
Let's make a motion, make a motion, second.
Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor? All right, both, motion carry.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we go into the bills list. A motion of the Board of Council approving October two thousand fifteen bills list, I need a motion. So, we... And a second, sorry, Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor? Both, motion carry. A motion of the Board of Council approving the payroll, October sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirteenth, and November sixth, two thousand fifteen.
So, move.
Sorry. Bruce and Jason. Monthly report. A motion to accept a pay, any commission due to the September two thousand fifteen real estate tax collective report.
So, move, second.
Okay, Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carry. A motion to accept August two thousand fifteen financial report.
So, move, second.
Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carry. A motion to accept September two thousand fifteen police report.
So, move.
Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carry. A motion to Board of Council regarding the falling real estate tax refund due to the change of the assessment requested by the real estate tax collector. Year two thousand fifteen, lot two fifty-five, be ninety, the amount of one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents. The Italian Neutral Benefits Society. Two thousand fourteen, lot two fifty-five, partial ninety, one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one and nineteen cents. There would be the same one. Actually, all three are there. One more, two thousand thirteen. Lot two thousand fifty-five, partial ninety, one thousand, nine-hundred-and-one dollars and nineteen cents. They'll be the same one on society, on four-fourteen Marcus Street, Bridgeville. The total amount is three thousand, five hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. I need a motion.
So, move.
I need second.
I'll say.
Okay, Bruce and Jason, everybody in favor? Okay. Committee report, administration, Bruce.
I have nothing to mention.
Any question for administration? Finance, okay, general fund, one million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. Sewer fund, two hundred thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Garbage fund, forty-nine thousand, seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Capital improvement, twenty-five thousand, hundred-and-sixteen dollars and six cents. Legume fuel, hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars, point eighty cents. I need a motion.
I think you...
Oh, I just, that's right, sorry. Boy, I tried to be fancy my last meeting. By the way, before I close my, I wish that everybody exercised their duty next month to go home. It'd be something good for us residents to do. And that's all I have. Thank you. So, that's more, right? Yeah, parks and recreation.
Underword.
Thank you, anything for parks? Public court? Thank you, anything for public? Public safety? Okay. Chief, anything, well, I'll call you on your report.
Nope.
Mayor, pass call.
Halloween parade, the signs are up. Trick-or-treat, October thirty-first, six to eight.
Six to eight. Okay, anything for the mayor? Police chief, check please.
He said no girl.
Oh, you already told me that.
What were you asking?
Do you have to go watch the game? Celeste, come on. Go steal it.
You have my regular four.
They got a different...
Kick wounds, but...
They got a different kick. They should call me, I played soccer one day.
You better warn mine of those two days, buddy.
It leaves you. Okay, if we were... You have my regular four? Okay, engineer, same.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two thousand fifteen pavement maintenance, El Grande will be here within the next week and a half to start work and complete the program done. Sanitary sewer CCTV clean inspection, we're trying to get the two thousand and fourteen contract wrapped up. The CD forty-two grant application, as Lori said, we got an application into county for demolition of seven-eighty-one Bower Hill Road. Once we get the green light on that, we'll complete the full application. Two thousand fifteen sanitary sewer operation maintenance, we're working on the soil-like construction on some of the water periods. And Jet Jack's giving us a schedule for the completion of the lining work for their portion of the project. The two thousand fifteen CCTV with inside pipe, we're going through the data that they provided. We'll get that completely cleaned up before the November meeting. And then, on Sharpier Street, Washington Avenue, Sharpier Street Bridge intersection, nothing new to report on those projects since Pendoc has indicated that due to this budget impasse, any funding implications have been not given. So, and I received an email today, there's, Pendoc's working on a multimodal grant application. I think that's something we're going to want to submit for one of these projects. And I'll talk with Mike Hammer about traffic engineering. And we also got a response on the Bower Hill Road, Washington Avenue, conceptual plan was submitted. Pendoc came back and asked if additional studies be done to investigate the timing of these signals and the length of the line.
Good, we're moving on, we're moving on.
Yeah, we'll probably have next round four years by the end, as far as what the additional studies will cost. So, I have to see if we're able to...
Well, we're, it's moving on.
Go ahead.
Anything for the engineer?
Mayor, not mayor.
Not just minor contribution, but go ahead, shoot it. Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben.
Situation on Ballen Street is the result of inflow infiltration. We agreed to that?
That's true. Do you do any weather events?
During a wet weather event, it is not McLaughlin Run Creek that goes up into these people's basement.
That's correct.
It is inflow infiltration.
That's correct.
Which should not occur.
In a perfect world, correct.
In a perfect world, in the world I want to live in, it should not occur.
Right.
Okay?
But it does.
But it does, and we need to figure out where the inflow infiltration is coming from.
Well, I think, several of the laterals, and I think we definitely have the feasibility study to build the parallel sewer, a portion of that front pipe. And it's just a matter of getting the funding and implementing it at some point in the future. But there's one element here that you have to realize is that we can do a lot of part in our system, but the Alka-Sian system downstream doesn't have the capacity to accept the additional flow.
That follows the old model of they will accept everything we send. The new model, which we're both aware of, is we need to do source reduction.
Right.
And we need to do it cooperatively with our neighbors in Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park. It's expensive, but it isn't all to blame upon the laterals. A good part of it is, but not every piece of it. I believe that somewhere along that sewer line that starts at South Hills Village, that there are some more significant defects, and I think we should try and find them.
There is a project called the Morton Arrow Project that Upper St. Clair is working on. And I think that's, they claim that there's a lot of high and low in that portion of the borough or the township up there. And I believe they're in the process of getting that project implemented to have that reduction. So, that's one part, Pat. I mean, I think we need to look for other portions, and we're going to talk about that off-line.
Okay, thank you.
Fire chief.
Thanks, Mr. President, Acting President. Couple things, I gave you my list. I wasn't here last month for April's fire calls. I don't have September because the server was down doing the reports. But I do want to report on one thing with the August one. Just to let everybody know, we were assisting St. Clair one night on a house fire. And while that was going on, we had a backflow fire per hill towers. And just to let everybody know, why they didn't see us there is because we were in St. Clair. The neighboring departments assisted us and handled that. I did come back to assist and make sure everything was taken care of there. So, that's what mutuates Ford coverage. We've done that with other communities too, so just to let everybody know. And the night of the rain we had, just to let everybody know, we handled, we did seven houses on Ballen Street. The houses we did didn't have pumps or the backflow preventers in them. But the houses that had pumps or the backflow were closed for dry. If they had a pump, they kept up with it. It was very, very, very minimal, and we didn't have to do nothing. But the other ones, they've been down there eighteen years. And since I've been in the fire department thirty years, we've been going down there. And we've been going down there before me to handle flooding calls and basement flooding. And my point is, we're volunteers. And Pat, you were there, you said, break down there for free for five hours. We have no problem helping people, but when people don't take the initiative when they know they live in a flood plain to help themselves, you know, it gets tiring on us. You know, one resident, his pump acted up. We had no problem helping him, assisting, we brought it ahead and caught the water head, and his pump kicked in and had no problem keeping up there. But it's the other ones that is every time, as soon as it happens, you know, we can tell you the address is off by heart, and know where we're going. And it's time that they need to step up and do their part to help us. Because you know, you're tying us up, and sometimes another department to help us on... That night, it was a minor ordeal because the amount of water we had was most in one house was probably maybe two feet at that. But, you know, if they had these in, if it started, it would have kept up and had no issues. And you were down there seeing that, so it's just, you know you live in it. You got to do your part too. And these are people that've been there the whole time.
It's not unknown to them.
No, it is not. And it's time for them to do something to help because you can't keep relying on us to handle it. I mean, we don't mind doing it, don't get me wrong, but it gets old after a while. We're at that old point, and, you know, we're here to protect the town and that. So, if we're tied up there and something else major comes in...
It doesn't make any sense.
For the couple, we always get every time.
Chief, for the idea of installing a backflow preventer to keep your basement from becoming flooded with sewage makes a lot of sense. Let alone freeing our fire department and our volunteers to not have to come down and help you. You know, you have to help yourself.
What you just paid in insurance, and your insurance to go up because you have flood insurance down there, what it's costing you for your increase is probably what it costs to put that backflow preventer in, and they're going to get their money back.
That's, I, Lori, our manager last year, you sent out those letters. I'm not suggesting that the boroughs should do this for that. That's not my suggestion. But I think we, I think we ought to look at this in much the way we look at a property that's not being kept up as to facilitate their putting it in. And we looked at that, at the backflow preventers, and this as a test case, as an exploratory, and for looking at laterals.
Right, also, some of these houses, if they have the backflow preventer, they don't even have a pump. They don't have either one.
And we did, for any, we did, it's more indicated, I mean, the offer to work with them to accomplish that. But from what we were told, I believe by Joe as well, is that those folks, you can put, if you put a backflow preventer on, but they still have old terracotta or bad laterals, you're basically putting a cap on the end of a straw for a sit so they're still going to get it because they're getting it both ways.
Then they need to solve both problems.
That's right.
I know that we take that time to cooperate with them in that, but they need...
Okay, whatever it is, they've been in here now.
This, this, this don't make sense, we know this is, it's common. We have a lot more, they're common.
But this one that you're wearing is...
Wait, when do we start store, store, when do we start that?
We need solutions.
And then you're going to get hot, that's, that's right, that's worrying about...
Let's get over here.
That's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. The infiltration is a lot more yet to fix before we complete that. I had many discussions with Joe. Okay, we have a sub-bridge, general dinner here, our library. Well, there's nobody here, but I know I see many sign up there since I'm very attached to the library. They have some Halloween stuff, I believe, so maybe some of you can get a masquerade or suit or something and go there, and I'm sure you have to pay, and that's what it's all about. So, look into it. I have a mask on already, so I'm ready, I'll be there. Oh, was he sad, he wouldn't make another? We need the money, what's the difference? Thank you. More information?
I did provide counsel regarding, I didn't have time to get it done today. There's just a few things. We're working with the Land Water Conservation Fund in DC and our neighboring Ballen Grant. We did need it on October eighth regarding the flooding, and we will be giving information to the neighboring communities and to the court. I'm working on that. We had a flu shock clinic here on September twenty-ninth. Four-sixteen dollar away with the home that we purchased next door is empty. All of the tenants are gone, so we're going to get that tightened up for the winter. I know we're only bring like-go grant because of the lack of budget. Canmake, our signage company, I'll be meeting with them this week to go over construction documents. We have the PNC yearly meeting regarding the pension for the police, no issues.
We have the P N C yearly meeting regarding the pension for the police, no issues there. And I'll be, we'll begin working with the budget and with the finance committee probably this week. Get started, and Pat, as a note, battery backups for traffic signals. I talked to Traffic Systems, and they are two hundred and eighty dollars per head. Four heads are eleven hundred and twenty dollars per signal. So they are, you are able to put them in, and John Carter from Traffic Systems is going to give me a quote in case council would like to consider that for next year's budget.
So roughly eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred and twenty dollars per signal.
Per signal?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Cool.
He said Pendot is requiring them more and more as their operations go.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, Mr. Johnson.
Any question for our manager? Old business, new business?
I just want to make a comment.
Please.
Mazzino went to Hartman Homes display on Sunday. And not to ask, there was another woman there, and she was complaining about having to use our Ridge Road and the Cove School Road, getting up there to the place where we were. And our salesperson just said, well, any, in, in, within a year, I believe she said, they'll be opening Main Street, so you can just zip down there onto Bauer Hill Road.
I don't think it's on the point.
It is, the tallest builders are going to be building.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's, yeah, that's known building, yes. Couple months, yes, yes, yes.
I just wanted to keep your breath up, Pat.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you said thank you.
Well, he doesn't care, he's only.
No, it's true.
Yes, I do.
What's the matter with you, Indiana?
Okay, I need a motion.
So move.
Any, anybody in favor, second?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carry, journey.